My name is Ashton Carlson. I am a junior in the Business Pathway. I really was open to my interest in business. My eyes were open to that. And when I worked for my dad at his company, and then I realized that I wanted to study business in college and go into business as my career. And I had heard that there is a great business program at TCA. And I came and tried it out and like met the instructor and Mrs. Ryder, and I just fell in love with it. I just like how it's like the real world and how it's more independent and like it's opposed to high school where it's like a structured situation here. It's like you're responsible for yourself. And my favorite field trip we've gone to, we went to Arch Rival, which is a marketing company based in downtown Lincoln. And yeah, it was just super cool. They have a great atmosphere there. And it was just really nice to see how what we're studying really translates into the real world. I would love to go study business, get my masters in business, and one day run my own business.
My name is Dania Gomez. I'm a senior and I am in the Health Science Pathway. I love how the teachers are committed. They don't give up on you even though you feel like giving up. It's a great experience. I think it's like you get your med aid and you get your CNA, so it's like worth it. Next semester, we're going to do phlebotomy on each other, so we're going to draw each other's blood. So it's going to be kind of fun. You actually get to experience it. You don't have to practice on the dummy like you did last year. It's kind of fun. If not getting into nursing, I want to major in biology and just find a field that I'm, no, medical field for sure, but find the career that's right for me.
I'm Philip Lackey. I'm in the Networking Pathway and I'm a senior in high school. I like all the hands-on experience. Here, there's the technology and hardware necessary to be able to learn all this and truly experience it. Recently, we have configured multiple servers and computers to talk to each other and fixed and done lots of troubleshooting between networks and figured out lots of computer issues. We've gone to multiple data centers throughout the city. We got to go to Bryan Health Data Center and see their crazy amount of servers and storage that they have and have that all explain to us how it works, which is not something that would happen back here at home high school. The Career Academy has helped me with this by showing me that I really want to go into computer networking and security and help me to make my decision before I even really hit college and also get a head jumpstart on everybody else before I actually go into college.
This meeting of the Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education for November 27th, 2018, is called to order. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer.
Yeah, here.
Mr. Boswell.
President.
Mrs. Danick.
Here.
Mrs. Duncan.
Here.
Mr. Mayhew.
President.
Ms. Mungar.
Here.
Mr. Schulte.
President.
The Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted and available at the main entrance of the room. We have minutes from our regular meeting on November 13th and our Board-Senator Dinner on October 24th for approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, the minute stand approved is published. Our student celebration this evening features the way our students can take curriculum and expand those lessons into even deeper and more enriching experiences. Lincoln Public Schools curriculum for Computer Science includes robust lessons in a wide variety of skills, including coding. Kent Steen, Curriculum Specialist for Computer Science, will present a brief overview of the growth of Computer Science and Coding curriculum and then introduce you to a student who has started a thriving Computer Science education organization in Lincoln. Kent.
Thank you. My name is Kent Steen. I'm the Curriculum Specialist for Computer Science, and I'm super excited to be here in front of you. First of all, I need to point out that next week is actually Computer Science Education Week in the Nation, and so all the schools around the country and actually in the world will be celebrating Computer Science Education. You may have heard of the Hour of Code. Go to hourofcode.com and you can learn how to code on your own in just an hour. Good for a couple of you, especially in the field. We will be looking forward to our citywide event on December 8th. All of you would be invited to that. It's at Nebraska Innovation Campus. You can just go to code L and K dot org and register. It's totally free and open to everybody in the community. It's a wonderful chance for students, really focused K through eight, but anybody can come. We have about 25 interactive booths for students to just learn more about Computer Science and information technology. It's a good collaboration between the Lincoln City Chamber of Commerce, Lincoln Public Schools, University of Nebraska, and Innovation Campus. And so again, next Saturday, December 8th, from 9 to noon. Code L and K dot org to register. In Lincoln Public Schools, we have really had just a booming, booming growth in Computer Science. I get very excited when I talk about what we've been doing in Computer Science and LPS. Hashtag LPS CompSci for all of you out there on Twitter, you can follow us. We have increased our high school enrollment from about 100 students in Computer Science up to about 800 students this year. We are continually working towards our stated goal 50/50 by 2020, which means we will have gender equity on our Computer Science classes by the year 2020 and are making significant progress towards that goal. One also big thing to me that's been exciting is the growth of student activities, clubs, and groups in our school district related to Computer Science, all the way again from our youngest kids in elementary to our high school students and in our summer tech program as well. One outstanding student who I'm extremely excited and honored to introduce to you today, he is a junior at Lincoln East, and last year along with a couple of his friends decided that they wanted to start this club called Code for Change. And I don't want to steal too much of his message to you, but they have just done an amazing job with this, and so I want to introduce you Pernod Rajan, and he's going to tell you more about Code for Change.
Good evening, everyone. A short introduction about me. As Dr. Steen stated, my name is Pernod and I am a junior at Lincoln East High School. I'm also the current president and co-founder of Code for Change, which is a statewide Computer Science education organization. So I'm here today to speak to you all about the recent innovations in Computer Science Education and how Code for Change is utilizing these modern concepts to efficiently expose students to the topic of Computer Science. Our methods of education stray away from the traditional ideologies of having a teacher in the front of the room, teaching concepts to students through PowerPoints and having them taking notes. Instead, we focus on more experiential learning, computational thinking, and the utilization of learned concepts. So to teach students Computer Science as efficient as possible, Code for Change utilizes experiential learning, which teaches students exactly how to apply the concepts that they have learned in the classroom. Furthermore, we utilize capstone projects and we provide community organizations with efficient solutions to the problems that they're facing. After providing students with fundamentals of Computer Science, which are taught by UNL professors, they're given, they're each given real-life capstone projects by real-life business clients. These clients are facing a true issue in their day-to-day lives, which needs to be solved, and we assign each client a Code for Change team and provide them with the necessary tools and utensils to solve that solution through utilizing Computer Science. By doing so, they're providing a great benefit to the community through creating efficient solutions for the client. Furthermore, this teaches the students the temperament and environment of the true business world and shows them the application of school-taught concepts. By doing so, we're increasing concept comprehension and decreasing the regurgitation of information taught by teachers. And this is extremely necessary to educate students at a high caliber. The utilization of concepts that teachers teach is also necessary to make sure that students continue to be interested in the topic. To increase interest even more in the subject of Computer Science, we must show students how they can utilize the skills that they learn in school to better their own personal lives and our personal community. So now I'm going to go and look at a few specifics of our Code for Change teams. So this is Physicians Wellness. Physicians Wellness was given the problem of designing a solution that manages stress levels among physicians to make them peak performers all the time. After facing a multitude of setbacks, including a loss of team members, as you can see in the pictures, Kai and Lucas were able to create an efficient solution for their client. Physicians Wellness is an organization in Nebraska which is consisting of major physicians who are all looking to better the lives of physicians. The organization identified a problem in physicians due to an increase in technology usage and dependency. This led to an extremely fast-paced lifestyle for the physicians. In turn, the organization discovered a monumental increase in stress levels. Kai and Lucas innovatively decided to use the cause of the problem, technology, to solve the problem itself. The duo created an application which was successively able to identify and mitigate stress levels in physicians through asking a series of questions and providing specific feedback depending on the question's responses. They created questions within their application which helped narrow down stress factors and helped to help the physicians analyze their own stress. Furthermore, depending on the responses to the questions, the application fed back tips to help deal and minimize their stress. Furthermore, they utilized accessory areas which helped show how outside daily factors affect their own stress. So Roots Ventures, their problem was to remove the barriers that rural entrepreneurs faced when, to access the training, resources, and network they needed to launch and grow their business. The issue we tried to solve was to increase and encourage entrepreneurship in rural areas of Nebraska. David Gleb and Prema tried to achieve this by building a virtual community and enhancing communication between entrepreneurs. The three features that their application had were a newsfeed where users can post about important info or events, and people could learn about more about entrepreneurship. Furthermore, a chatroom for a more casual setting where people could chat with each other and get to know other rural entrepreneurs. Furthermore, they created an aspect of offline meetings which the website could be used to inform users about specific opportunities to meet each other face-to-face or set up a video chatting event. This is used to further strengthen the community aspect. So the Nellnet team, consisting of Veronica, Andrzej, Josh, and Emily, had a problem in which they had to come up with a program that easily, sorry, this is a pre-sage analytics, consisting of Veronica, Andrzej, and Josh. So they had a problem in which they had to change the way of collecting manual data on pre-sage measuring devices in food manufacturing. Data collection is a huge component of food manufacturing companies. In certain companies, especially in pre-sage's customers, have not automated this process. Instead, humans are physically traveling around manufacturing plants to collect this data. There are a multitude of issues that come with this, for example, efficiency, cost, and human error. So the pre-sage team came up with a way to automate the process of data collection, minimize the human error, and save the time, save the client time and money. So moving on to our final project, which was the Nellnet team. The Nellnet team consisted of Tim, Mason, Alex, and Chuck. The Nellnet was easily our largest client with over 6,000 employees. These large numbers, large numbers of employees come with pros and cons. Nellnet began to see a decrease in efficiency when it came to meetings, due to the fact that employees were not able to recognize each other during meetings. Furthermore, the company felt as if they lacked a complete social fear in which employees could view positions, roles, and pictures of all employees. To solve this issue, our Code for Change team created a database with all employee records. The employees now have a tool to identify employees along with their roles and positions. So what I just gave you was a quick rundown of our current project, which just ended a few weeks ago. That project consisted of about four teams with four students each and four clients. Our future project, which we are going to be holding over the summer, consists of 10 teams with five students of each team, thus 50 total students, and each team will have a client. Thus, we will have 10 clients total. We're coining it a 10-week virtual committed internship program. A few possible clients we have lined up right now are Huddle, Nellnet, Spreetail, Firespring, and two faculty UNL departments. These clients will be providing the students with the capstones projects which I referred to earlier. This program will launch May 28th and end on August 6th. Interns will have three meetings a week, and interested students can visit our website, codeforchange.info, and for more information on our future project and applications. To make this organization an opportunity as accessible as possible, we are making the internship fully virtual and all meetings are occurring through online meeting softwares. Furthermore, to decrease the amount of prior experience necessary with Computer Science, we are bringing in professors and partnering with an organization called Youth Entrepreneurship Clinics to provide curriculum to the students in which they can utilize to gain knowledge which is necessary to succeed in their respective internships. Overall, Code for Change has a bright path, and through utilizing proper funding and partnerships, I believe that we will be able to expand to a nationwide and have a great nationwide impact. Thank you.
Thank you. We might have you come back up here because I think we have some board members that talk your talk and they probably have some questions.
I was told to stay up here. I forgot about that.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Mayhew.
I'm so sorry if you said this. I was taking notes while you were talking. It sounds very interesting. How are you getting connected with the folks who have business needs?
Right, the clients. Sure. So what we currently utilize is our partnership organization, Youth Entrepreneurship Clinics, and through that, we are able to find clients. But mostly, it's all about like networking and finding startups because startups are obviously facing a lot of issues in the initial stages of growing their business. But after finding those startups, we're able to see if they have any software issues. However, it really comes down to networking, I would say.
I love this. If this had been in school and as in high school, I would have been all over it. Tell me, what made you decide that you wanted to do something like this?
Yeah, sure. So we initially had a Computer Science Club within our school. It wasn't very expansive or didn't really have a huge impact, which is really what I thought Computer Science could do to our state and our community with, especially with the efficiency. And what's beautiful about Computer Science is the amount of necessary to act, the amount of like tools and utensils necessary. You know, there's not a lot of price of inputs, and that really encouraged me to provide access to like a lot of students, and I wanted to really get more students involved and interested in the topic and make it less scary to them and, you know, show them the real applications. Like a lot of them took classes in school and stuff, however, none of them really found like the stuff that they learned to be really applicable to the real world. And that's what I really wanted to show the students is that this tool that they are learning in school is very beneficial and they can utilize it to better our community in great ways.
Excellent. Thank you so much for presenting this to me.
And of course, Lanny probably has something to say.
First off, very impressive presentation. Thank you so much, and thank you for having the courage to get this started and be one of the pioneers in it. I'm just really curious, what are your plans after high school? And you know, what are your plans after that maybe?
Yeah, this was a question asked me prior to this, but yeah, I'm looking to go to college either on one of the coasts. Yes, I'm leaving Nebraska sadly. However, I do plan on coming back to have a family or whatnot in the later stages of life. But yes, after college, I do plan on coming back.
Well, some of the best software engineers I know went to college out on the coast.
Exactly. Thank you so much.
That's great. I have Kathy and then Annie.
Okay, to the vast majority of us, we like our computers to turn on when we hit the button. We want the software we open to do exactly what we tell it. So for all of those who are like me, I want to say thank you for going into Computer Science to make sure these apps work, to make sure all of these businesses' apps work. Because when we go into their website and we can't find something, we're really frustrated. So knowing that our students are finding that need to take care of a great many people in the world around us and as it changes, I don't think you have any idea of the magnitude of gratitude you will have as you solve these problems in the future.
Yep, that's what we love to do.
Annie.
So about how many hours a week do you put to this project?
Yeah, that's, it kind of depends, but you know, we, the students themselves about, they have about three meetings a week, the student teams, and they put in about six hours to seven hours. You know, it kind of depends on the stage of the process of the actual project. However, it's about six hours usually on average for the students to work with professors, mentors, both from UNL, to create their solution. But were you asking specifically about me or the student teams? I wasn't sure.
Well, a little bit of both.
A little bit of both, yeah.
And is this during the daytime, at night, on the weekends? One of you?
It's usually on the weekends. So they meet up with mentors during the weekdays sometimes, but we have meetings with Tuesdays, which are the, at Lincoln East, which they meet with clients. So the clients are able to give them the necessary, like what they specifically want from the project. And then on Saturdays, they meet up with mentors and the UNL, the UNL professors to learn the specific content to actually apply it to their client's project.
And so this is something that any LPS student can come, do you have an age range?
Nope. We can take anybody. We probably want, like I said, no prior experience, as long as they're motivated, and it's not just LPS. Like I said, we're statewide organizations, so we are, like I said in the last bit, we're making all the internships virtual so that the students, they don't have to travel, you know, from, if they're in Scottsbluff, Nebraska, they don't have to drive eight hours to come have a meeting with the client. Instead, we have like specific software that's able to have virtual meetings, and same thing with professors and mentors. All those meetings will be occurring virtual, online, so.
Well done.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Finally, do you have anyone in the audience that you'd like to introduce? I saw someone taking pictures of you.
Yes, that's my father. His name's, my last name, Rajan. Yes, I know, that's a little weird, but that's Raj.
Yay. Wonderful. Thank you. Well, thank you for coming tonight.
All right, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Also tonight for special reports, we have a United Way campaign update from Betsy Tonanges. Looks like she might have brought Mr. Brian Watchman with her as well.
We did. We will try and follow that. Okay, good evening. My name's Betsy Tonanges, and along with Brian Watchman from the United Way, we're here to provide you with the 2018 LPS Combined Giving Campaign Results. This year, our campaign ran a little bit earlier, from September 25th through October 5th. Before we do that, we wanted to first extend our gratitude to Dr. Joel John Neal and Dr. Larson for their support and guidance throughout the campaign. We also want to extend a special thank you to our K-12 administrators and LPS department heads for their enthusiasm, support, and most importantly, for educating our staff about the impact that their donations make on a daily basis. And I also want to thank Bob Reeker, Art Specialist at Elliott, for assisting me in creating this beautiful traveling trophy. So we'll share a little bit of a few statistics with you. As a district, last year, LPS staff members raised $121,929, and we had a 23.3% district participation rate. This year, we set a lofty goal. I'm new to fundraising, apparently it was really lofty, but for $155,000, in a stretch goal of $160,000. And as a district, we were able to raise $147,554 for an increase of a little over $25,000, and we added 689 new donors for a 34% participation rate. Donors can choose to donate through United Way and have the option to designate their giving towards over 100 nonprofits here in the Lincoln community. So it's been fun to see the passions that people have for different projects throughout our district. This year, our top three schools, who are also our top three secondary schools that contributed the most campaign were third place, East High under the guidance of Sue Casada; second place, Lincoln High under the guidance of Mark Larson; and in first place, North Star under the guidance of Ryan Zabawa. Our top three elementary schools were third place, Hartley Elementary under the guidance of Mr. Jeff Rust; second place, Zeeman Elementary under the guidance of Mrs. Christie Shermer; and first place, Clinton Elementary under the guidance of Mrs. Angie Ludke. We also calculated the schools with their greatest increase from last year to this year, and those schools were Dawes Middle School under the guidance of Angie Plugi; Beatty Elementary under the guidance of Mr. Sean Bailey; and again, Hartley Elementary under the guidance of Mr. Jeff Rust. Lastly, there is a combined effort to engage three of our departments who are so integral to what we do on a daily basis. Facilities and maintenance, distribution and purchasing, and transportation have all increased their participation this year greatly. So Ryan, Scott, and Matt, and mostly Matt, have been pining for this traveling trophy award and bragging rights until next year's campaign, and this year, it will have its home with distribution and purchasing. Congratulations, Matt.
All right, I know you have a long agenda. I just want to say on behalf of United Way, thank you. This was about our third largest increase so far of all of our companies in the campaign, and we meet once a month with our United Way agencies. We call it Director of United Way Agencies. And whenever they give reports about what they're doing, it's kids and families, and the overlap between us is the most overlap we have with any institution. So thank you. It means a lot, and all these funds are going to go out to help people who need it with a very reasonable overhead of about 13%. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian, for all your leadership as well. Thank you, Brian, for all of your leadership as well. Okay, our next item is public comment. Blue cards are available at the entrance for those wishing to speak. Each speaker is allowed five minutes and may provide printed materials to the board. Please begin your remarks by introducing yourself and I will inform you when you have one minute left. I have one blue card right now. So our first speaker is Richard Schmeling.
Who ends up with the blue card? Do you get it?
You can give it to her.
Okay, I'll bring it up to you.
So now I have two blue cards.
Well, you, you have an interesting agenda tonight and I can't wait until we get down to item 10 where Liz Standish is going to tell us about fruits, vegetables, and potatoes. That sounds real exciting. My name is Richard Schmeling. I am the president of an organization called Citizens for Improved Transit. And I have basically a fact sheet here, which I will ask the work to distribute. Citizens for Improved Transit is an organization that's about three years old. We were formed to try to improve public transportation in Lincoln and for the most part, that means Star Tram. Thanks to a mayor and city council that have been very supportive, the Star Tram we have today is much better than what I encountered when I started riding it three years ago. How does that relate to the school board? Well, what we did, once we got some better bus service, we found an unmet need. And that was that many people in Lincoln don't have enough money to afford even an $8, 31-day Star Tram low-income senior bus pass. So we started a program. We got a grant from Lincoln Community Foundation. We're now supplying those bus passes to over 24 social service agencies in Lincoln. And then this fall, I visited with the superintendent at Lincoln Southeast and we were talking about bus service and, and things. And he said, you know, he said, "We've got students that go to our school that can't afford a bus pass and we have no funds to purchase bus passes." I said, "Oh." So then I checked with a couple of other schools and that's true. And I ended up visiting with Liz Standish. And Liz was very helpful, but the extra money that you got from the increase in valuations was used to purchase computers. She has no money to buy bus passes. I talked to Wendy Van at the Lincoln School Foundation. Wendy doesn't have any money to buy bus passes. What do we have in terms of a need? The head of the counselors and social workers surveyed the Lincoln schools. Of the schools that responded, we have an annual need for 800 of those low-income senior bus passes. Eight hundred. Our group is stepping forward as best we can to try to meet that need. But that need is so basic to the education process that it needs to be in your next budget. I'm going to ask the gentleman that, that was so kind as to distribute things to pass these out if you would, sir. Thank you. One of the items that we have is a letter from a counselor at North Star High School. And she's saying it a lot better than I can. She cited two examples of students. One student is a student that needs to ride the Star Tram bus, but because of a sibling that has disabilities and special needs, the family can't afford that $8 bus pass. So the bus passes we sent out there went to that student. She has not missed school a bit and she's getting As and Bs at North Star. There was another instance where a family, their vehicle got in a collision and it was disabled. They did not have the money to fix that vehicle and so the boy wasn't able to get to school. Once again, bus pass to the rescue. And that, that's a need. The survey showed a need for at least 800 passes a year. I suspect that number is low. We'll do the best that we can, but my point is simply this. You can buy computers, you can buy this, you can have all these programs, but if the kid can't get to school, you don't educate him. So to me, this is absolutely crucial and vital to the Lincoln Public School system. So I'm going to urge you next year, or this year, when you formulate next year's budget, put some money in that budget so that we can have a source for bus passes. We'll try to fill the gap as best we can. Oh, and by the way, I'll be here at the end of the meeting. If any of you are so moved, we have an account at Lincoln Community Foundation and I'd be glad to accept checks to be used to buy bus passes to help us out. And that's a commercial message, of course. I, I think that the policy of the school district is that you'll transport elementary and middle school kids, but high school kids are on their own. If you look at the letter from the North Star counselor, a lot of the kids that go to North Star live in Air Park. And that's a long trip away from North Star School. They can do it by bus. They can take the Arnold Heights route in to downtown and get on the 27th and go to school. I ride the buses all the time. Lincoln High students, a lot of them use the buses. I ride with them. We have some middle school students that use the buses because some of them are taking classes down at Lincoln High and they'll hop on the bus at Millard Leffler and ride the bus down to Lincoln High to go to their class and then return to the junior high. So there's a lot of usage. And I think I've probably taken up my five minutes of time.
Yep, but that's okay. I was letting you go on a little longer.
Okay.
But now, you're up.
I, I should indicate that present with me tonight is Diane Bartles. And Diane is a retired elementary school teacher. She's an integral part of our C-FIT organization. Also present with me is Ralph Hayden. Ralph is retired as an auditor from the Federal Highway Administration and following that, the Nebraska Department of Roads. And Ralph is my financial guru that does this, this bus pass thing and he won't let me get away with a penny of it. It all goes for bus passes. So you can rest assured that, that we're doing a good job. I've gone on quite a while. I'd, I'd be willing to respond to any questions from any members of the board.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, Mr. Mayhew.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say thank you so much for the work that you do and welcome to your guests and thank you for coming and giving the presentation tonight. Appreciate it.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. All right, our next item is the consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Barb?
I so move.
Is there a second? Annie?
I'll second that.
Are there any questions, comments, or conflict statements? Kathy?
I hereby declare potential conflict of interest and abstain from voting on any checks to the Nebraska Association of School Boards as part of Agenda Item 8.2.8 of the agenda material for this meeting. I vote in favor of all other consent items.
Lanny?
I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and abstain from voting on any checks to the Nebraska Association of School Boards as part of Agenda Item 8.2.8 of the agenda materials for this meeting. I vote in favor of all other consent items.
And I'm last. I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and abstain from voting on any checks to NASB as part of Agenda Item 8.2.8 of the agenda materials for this evening. I vote in favor of all other consent items. Any others? Very good. Laura, would you please call the role on the consent agenda?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes. Okay, we do not have any items for first reading this evening. For second reading and recommended for action from the planning committee, item 10.1.1, newly annexed property to the City of Lincoln, is there a motion for approval? Mr. Schulte?
I move to approve the annexation 10-1-1.
Ms. Danick?
I would second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Very good. Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the role on the motion to approve item 10.1.1?
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes. Also on second reading from the superintendent, item 10.2.1, fruits, vegetables, and potatoes. Number 9513. Is there a motion for approval? Annie?
I would move that we approve 10.2.1, fruits, vegetables, and potatoes.
Is there a second? Kathy?
I would second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Laura, please call the role on the motion to approve item 10.2.1.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes. We do not have any emergency items. We do not have any items removed from the consent agenda. That brings us to information items and reports. Are there any board committees wishing to report tonight? No? Okay. Well, you're going to. From the Career Academy, Mr. Schulte?
I had a meeting and a couple of things. First of all, there was a great video highlighting some of it. Our applications for the Career Academy are up this year, which is good. And that's on top of already growing attendance. I think that was the main thing I wanted to report was that apps are up by 32%. So significantly up too.
Wow, that is good. It's very good. Wonderful, thank you. Which brings us to the superintendent's update. Dr. Joel?
Nothing of substance other than requests that there not be any more weather-related events between now and Christmas. We're kind of on a tight leash right now. That concludes my report.
That was really good. Good report. Love it. Okay, so that brings us next to 13.3.2, the annual financial audit. Dr. Standish?
Yes, if I could have our auditors come up. Jean and Tim will come up and introduce themselves. And in the meantime, I want to recognize Jess Jefferson, who kind of leads the audit work and shepherds all the questions around and gathers all the data. Kim Schmidt, who helped fill in this year. She previously served in the audit role. And Jill Polly plays an instrumental part of this process as well, overseeing accounting and payroll. So we have an amazing team of people that helps get the auditors everything they need so they can analyze and bring this report to you. And if you want to do some introductions and talk a little bit about your firm and then do an overview of your findings in the audit, that would be great.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Standish. Good evening, board members. Good to see you all again. My name again is Jean Garles with the CPA firm HSMC Horizon. And this is Tim Lenz, who is a principal in our office, who really managed and oversee the, saw the audit process. So I'm going to let him visit with you. I know that a few of you met with him a few weeks ago that are on the finance committee. And we won't go through it in that detail, but want to make some, some general comments and kind of walk you through at least the, the audit. Just in general, it's a, a privilege and we consider it a privilege to, to be chosen as your independent auditors and we take that role very seriously. And while, the good, the good news is we don't, we don't have a lot to report and that's, that's a good thing. But that's not, that's not because there's a lack of effort and, and input and, and working with your team and going through enormous amount of records and transactions. But this year, at the end of our comments, I'll make some comments, was, was particularly, particularly well based on some of the challenges that we, we had. Not anything, anything bad, but again, we have before you tonight a very positive report. Your team is, continues to do extremely well. So, Tim, you want to walk us through the audit report a little bit, or the board through the audit report?
Good evening. Thanks for having us. Attached to your, your packet is the audit report for both ESU 18 as well as Lincoln Public Schools. Myself and a team of three other auditors from our firm came out the month of October, spent about three weeks here, working with the team here, working through all the documents and coming up with these reports. Included in our reports is the report on the basic financial statements. Again, this year, similar to prior years, we are giving an unmodified opinion to those financial statements, saying that those financial statements are materially correct in accordance with the modified cash basis of accounting that the district and the ESU uses. In addition to that, we had reports on compliance and internal controls or financial reporting. Again, there, another clean report, nothing to report there, no material matters of non-compliance that were noted and no deficiencies, material deficiencies in internal controls over, over the financial accounting of, of the funds of the district. In addition to the audit of the financial statements, we also performed what's called a single audit, in accordance with uniform guidance. And that's the audit of the federal funds that the district receives and expends during the year. This year, we did test two major programs, the Child Nutrition Cluster, which includes your school breakfast program and your National School Lunch Program, as well as the Medical Assistance Program. And with that, those tests, tests that we performed, we did not identify any non-compliance or any issues that need to be reported. So again, kudos to the staff and everyone involved. Another clean of report for this year, so. Other random, other comments to make here, we did issue a separate letter to the board just with some general required communications that are required as part of an audit. There's nothing of significance to note there. Also want to say that there were no adjusting journal entries that were made during the year. So all the staff made all the proper adjustments and presented the financial statements accurately to us and to include into the audit reports as presented here. Anything else, Jean?
No, nothing else. Any, any questions from anyone?
I would add, just for context, that the finance committee does serve as the audit committee. So three members of the board did have the opportunity a few weeks ago to engage in a conversation with the auditors and ask questions and go through the report, where we actually flipped through the pages in some greater detail. So we do function with like an audit committee format and this does comply with state statute that requires that we have an external auditor with external eyes, which is a good thing. We want to make sure we're doing a good job taking care of taxpayer dollars.
Wonderful. Mr. Mayhew?
I don't have any questions. Welcome back, Jean. Good to see you again.
Yes.
But as Chair of Finance, I did want to point out, we did go through this as a committee in more detail. Thank you so much for your work year after year in helping us to work through this process. My opinion, after hearing staff go through this for the benefit of my colleagues, is we have a lot of very intelligent, hardworking people who do something very difficult and they do it well. And so hopefully that is good news to all of us that, that we, they are keeping us in such good financial shape.
Wonderful. Anyone else have a question? Mr. Mayhew, who serves on that committee with you on finance? Remind me, please.
That is Barb and Lanny.
Lanny, okay, very good. Perfect. Well, thank you, finance committee. And thank you for giving us a clean bill of health. That's what we like to hear.
Yes, you're very welcome. And I'd just like to echo Mr. Mayhew's comments. This year, particularly as I mentioned previously, with the, the computer system conversion and then with, with Jess's maternity leave, it was, could have been particularly challenging. But, but everybody on the team stepped up and really did an amazing job. This really was, was probably one of the smoothest audit engagements we've had in, in our tenure working with the district in spite of those challenges. So, you know, Liz's leadership, Jill, you know, grand finale of her, her going out. The work was spectacular and, and we really appreciate that. It's, it's just such a really good team that, that, that my team, working with your team, working together has, has really created a very good working environment. And, and, you know, I think the results show that. But a lot of people put a lot of effort into. Kim stepped back into some roles which she was previously doing and, and just want to recognize her too, so. And Jess came back and stepped right in where she, she, you know, right in the middle of the process. So a lot of people on your team. middle of the process. So a lot of people on your team deserve a lot of recognition and credit because they, they really have done a very remarkable, they do a remarkable job for you all.
Great. Well, thank you so much for coming tonight. And again, I would like to thank all of Liz's team. You are phenomenal. You have twins and you come right back and you don't miss a beat. Great. Thanks again for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the monthly financial report. Are there any questions on the monthly financial report? Very good. Announcements of upcoming events for the board. December 5th, we have a Chamber Coffee at 8:00 AM at the Chamber Office. December 11th, we have a board work session at 4:00 PM right here, followed by a board meeting at 6:00 o'clock. That brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. Would anyone wishing to speak to the board, please come forward? Seeing none. I do not have a request for closed session. Thank you all for attending. We are adjourned.